Good evening, Ann. Can you hear us?
I can. Good evening.
Okay, good. You're coming in loud and clear.
Vernell is having microphone issues, so we're just checking here real quick to see what our options are.
Okay, let me know when we're ready to get underway.
I'm just gonna let everyone know that I did open the chat to be available for everyone tonight publicly, just in case. Well, here comes Vernell now, I think. I was gonna say that way you could type if you had a question.
Okay.
Vernell, is that you that just joined us?
That's Edie.
Oh, Edie, okay. I didn't recognize the end number again, sorry.
That's okay.
Hi, Edie.
Hi. Sorry, I'm just on the phone today. I don't have any more data.
I spent from about 1:00 in the afternoon till 6:00, sitting at this desk and this chair, and got up and walked out and said, "Oh, I've got a meeting tonight. I'm gonna have to go back to the office." Oh, well.
So I'm just gonna leave the chat open for everyone that way. Vernell, if you need to say something into the chat, you can feel free to post it in there. Just a reminder to everyone that the chat is recorded along with the rest of the meeting, so just be aware of that. And everything is started recording-wise, so feel free to start whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'll call the November 4, 2020, meeting of the Historic District Commission of Washington County to order at 7:00. We have with us Greg Smith.
President.
And Michael, last name's Lushbaugh, is that right? Michael? Yes. And Arnold Langford is here. Another member, Vernell, is with us. I don't know if she can hear us or not. And Ann Aldrich and Edie Wallace are here, so we have a quorum. I assume all the members of the commission have received the minutes from the October 5, 2020, meeting. And at this time, I would ask if there are any changes, corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes that we need to talk about. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the October meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Michael has moved.
Edie will second.
Edie has seconded. All those in favor of the motion of accepting the October minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. And so the minutes are approved as circulated. Under old business, we have a demolition permit process for a 1,389-square-foot, single-family house, barn, outhouses, cabin, four sheds located at 707 Mariah Furnace Road, Lot Number 1. We saw some pictures of this before, as I recall. Megan, you wanna jump in here, or?
Yes, I can. Let me switch gears here.
Okay.
So Jill actually did the site visit for this, and Mr. Langford, who is the property owner, is on tonight with us for any questions that you might have. Here are the photos, or a few of the photos that Jill took on her site visit to the property. And then, since Mr. Langford is joining us, I went ahead and did a screenshot of the property so that we could talk a little bit easier about the different buildings. But Mr. Langford is online if you guys had specific questions for the property owner this evening.
Do any members of the commission have questions for Mr. Langford?
I guess we were wondering if there was any other option to demolition.
That was discussed. We noticed that the addition onto the brick house didn't look all that great, but the house itself seemed to be pretty stable and livable. And so we were wondering what was the reason for the demolition. Would you like to address that, Mr. Langford?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
The brick looks good from the outside. The house inside was quite disgusting. There have been no upgrades. When we tried to get it insured, they found that the electrical system in the cellar, they found like the heater coils were laying in water. The walls in the cellar had crumbled. And I don't know what exactly was done to, or what the person that was trying to, that lived in the property was trying to do to the house. But it was, we found it to be a liability. And anywhere in the upper portion of the house, the smell was so bad that we didn't even want to stay in to try to clean it. So that, along with the walls, other walls and whatnot, there had been no upkeep to the house for many years. So my wife and I, I had a couple people look at it, and even the fire department. Mr. Oley, I think that's how you pronounce his name, the fire.
Yes.
Yeah. He agreed with us that it's gonna cost way more to even bring it up to standards than the house is worth. Yes, the brick looks good, but if you were to go visit inside, it's kinda like matches the porch area.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Langford on this? If there are no more questions, is there a motion to be made, one way or the other, on this? We do have a deadline. We have to make a decision pretty shortly here, so we can't put this off another month.
What was gonna happen with the barn?
My wife is trying to see if we could sell the wooded, all the wood from the barn. We had, someone was interested in, but he's in Pennsylvania. He's an Amish person, but we did not hear back from him. And we were talking to different folks to try to find someone so that we could have the wood sold and probably refurbished. But we haven't gotten too far with that either.
There are old barn groups that a lot of people will pay, as you've identified, will pay a lot of money for old barns. Come take them down and remove them, or to just come down and take them down. Jill, do you, or Megan, do you have a list of those kinds of groups that we could share with Mr. Langford?
There are some resources on our website, but there's none specific to barns that I'm aware of. But I can definitely share the resources that we have found. I don't know if Jill has anything to add to that.
Yeah, this is Jill. I know of one group, one person, who contacted us when the review in Harold property was talking about tearing down the barn. I don't know if they would be interested in this property as well, but I'll try to find that contact information and pass that along to Mr. Langford as soon as I can find it. I guess just as a clarification, at this point, Mr. Langford, can we just clarify that at this point, you're seeking to demolish the house and the barn, or just the house at this point?
At this point, it would be the house and the outer sheds. The outer sheds, all but one are in worse condition than the house. And, but we would be willing with the barn to, if you can find someone who wants to purchase the wood, that is our interest. We love the foundation on the barn, and we're probably gonna work with that. But other than that, we're gonna have the fire department use it for training, not the barn so much, but the house for some of their training as far as training their crew with the fire department.
As an aside, I can commiserate with you a little bit, Mr. Langford. An organization I belong to bought a property that had a large grove of polonia and walnut trees. And everybody that came and looked at it said, "Those are worth a lot of money." And I said, "Great, would you like to buy them?" No. So I see what you're, you know, I see what you're saying.
It all sounds good until you try to sell it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, but leaving the barn up then is a possibility in hopes that you can find someone that would salvage the timber and the siding, et cetera.
Sure, we have lots of quality boards inside. We just need someone who's serious about the scenario and to take it down. But again, our main concern is we've had people trespassing, and we consider it a liability because someone could squat it, squat in it at any time, and we're not ready to deal with that again.
I understand. Yeah, I understand that problem.
If I can, Tom, this is Ann Aldrich, Mr. Langford.
Yes.
I know in our last meeting, we discussed with Jill about visiting with you about the historic, the tax credits for renovating historic properties. And I don't know if you got a chance to look at that information the county's put together to see if that eases the pain of trying to rehab it.
What do you think about that? My wife is here. She's into that type of thing. I'm into liabilities. And, yeah, again, if we can find someone, as far as the barn goes, we're interested in getting money, so if we were to try to, we've got estimates which is gonna be over $100,000. We're not gonna do that, you know. So if we could, if we could get someone to purchase the wood, that would be a great thing.
Okay.
This is Teresa Langford. We have approached other, just names that have been given to us, or different contacts, and asked about restoring. Because right now, part of the roof on the northern side of the barn has blown off, like it's doing damage interiorly. And, but we've been told that the, I don't know what you'd call it, but the framing of the roof is really not even safe for someone to be up there. So it's an extensive amount of work, and we, the person that had worked on the barn in years past isn't doing that job anymore. And we haven't been able to find anyone, and I don't really feel comfortable if there's a safety factor. Don't know who to approach about that. The tax credits, we'd be interested in. I don't know what, over what, how many years you can stretch it, but still coming up with that money upfront to pay for the restoration. Yeah, that's kind of a hefty chunk of change. So even the people that look at it say, "You'd be better off putting up a new building," you know, so that's what we're up against. I love the thought of preserving it. It's just that we haven't been able to find a way for it to make sense for us.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get the name of Douglas Reed by any chance, Teresa?
Uh, no, no.
He's an historic preservationist out of Mercer'sburg, Pennsylvania. He used to be centered in Fagerstown. But he does consult on historic preservation of buildings, and he might be, he would be a good person to talk to, both in terms of if you wanted to explore restoration of the barn further, but also to tie you into the timber builders' associations and folks who would buy the barn.
Okay.
He's actually in the process of converting his barn to a dwelling for his daughter.
Oh, wow.
So he would be a really good person to talk to.
Okay.
Ann, you probably have Doug's contact information, do you not?
Uh, yeah, I'll try and find it here momentarily.
Okay, yeah.
I almost know his number by heart.
If you can give it to the Langfords here tonight, that would probably be a good thing. Any other comments while Ann is searching?
I've got it right here, Tom.
Yeah, I'll be sure to give him a call.
Great. Okay, any other comments, questions, discussion?
Greg Smith here.
Hey, Greg.
Megan and our Jill, does the wording of the demolition request as written cover all the buildings on the property?
I didn't understand it.
Yes, they should. Go ahead, Jill.
Sorry, Megan. According to the permit, yes, it covers the outbuildings, the house, and the barn. I'm pretty sure, at least that's what I read in the permit application.
And I do just wanna give just a brief message here. I think Vernell is trying to speak, but it's reverbing. So I put one of her users into the waiting room, so I'm gonna see if she wants to say something real quick.
All I want to say is, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Vernell.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. I have been listening. And I'll continue to listen and ask questions or make comments as I can. Thanks so much.
Okay, good, good. All right, is there anyone willing to make a motion for this demolition permit to go forward?
Greg Smith here. I would move that we approve the demolition permit to go forward.
And is there a second?
I second it. Michael.
That's Michael?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion moved and seconded to allow this permit. Any further discussion before we call the question? Hearing none, I'll call the question then. All those in favor of the permit motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, by nay. And the demolition permit is approved. And Mr. and Mrs. Langford, you've got Doug Reed's number, and I second what Ann has to say. He would certainly be a good contact if you're looking to either preserve or sell the parts of the barn. And I do encourage you to be in touch with him.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all for participating with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Megan and Jill, that's the only business on the agenda that I see. I know you have sent out a number of notices of training opportunities and some other Zoom opportunities. Did you wanna talk about anything else tonight before we wrap this up?
Yes, I believe Jill wanted to give a quick update on the demo permit process, so I will let her get into that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Megan. Yeah, this is Jill again. Just to give you a very brief update. You know, we continue to push through this demolition permit process and to try to make changes as we go along. Megan did put together a very nice summary of all of the comments that we've received from both Historic District Commission and the Advisory Committee. In that list, you can see there in the PowerPoint, we've kinda broken it down into our three priority areas that we wanna focus on with the commissioners. Documentation being a really big priority for us, then the 90-day feasibility period. And then, priority three being the deterrent to premature demolition, and that's talking about the fines and/or moratoriums on new construction. So we do, I did, we did send this to the Historic Advisory Committee at the request of the members from last month. We have not received any additional comments at this point, so we don't have anything else to add to that. You may have seen an email floating around from the Historic Advisory Committee's co-chair, Linda Irvin-Craig. She is, has asked that we work on getting an agenda, date, and time for the commissioners now, the time walking on doing. So that's the next step. We're gonna take it to the commissioners. Because of the COVID restrictions, we will likely only be allowed to have probably one member from each of the groups attend to discuss the issues. But I would encourage you to watch, to participate through either email or phone calls to commissioners, you know, gathering support from the local historic, historical society, so forth and so on. Because as I've said before, you know, silence is sort of consent when you're dealing with public participation. So we need as much input as we can from all of the groups interested in this information. And the commissioners need to hear from them, just as much as they would hear from any other group. I don't really have anything else to add above and beyond that. I'm happy to answer any questions or delve into this any further if you want. But that's just a real brief update on where we're at with that.
Jill, can you hear me? Jill, can you hear me? Okay, the document, yes, I can. This is great. I'm on my phone. The document has been looked at, discussed. Linda has made a final draft, maybe we'll call it. My question is, when you see that, when the committee sees that, will it be given to the commissioners before the public meeting? Do you know? It's relatively long.
Yes. Yes, we will include that as part of the agenda report form, and it will be made public. It will go up on the agenda so that anybody and everybody who wants to see what's on the agenda and what we're talking about will be able to read that document.
Okay, that's great. Do you have a possible meeting date? Will that be January? I'm just guessing.
I'm going to work, yeah, I'm going to work on getting something here in December, but no promises. I'm trying to get it into December because, starting in January, we're getting into budget season. And the commissioners really hate to talk about anything, you know, above and beyond the budget, because it is just all-consuming, to be honest with you. So I'm trying to get something for December. If not December, it will be very early January.
Okay, December would be good. To keep this in the forefront, I think it's important. I have another question. This is really a question to maybe Tom. Did you get any response from John Chapman to your October 14 letter, which I think was really very good?
I haven't seen anything, no. I don't know if Megan or Jill has seen something, but I have not gotten anything here.
Because your recommendation at the end really ties into some of the recommendations for the document of demolition that the Advisory Committee and what we've been talking about. It's right there. So that's why I was wondering if he had anything to say about, "That's a really great idea, and we support it."
Yeah, I don't think my home address was on that letter. I think it was all done through the Historic District Commission. So I would assume if there had been a response, that either Jill or Megan would have seen it.
Right, what I'm looking at is on Historic District Commission later head.
Right.
This is Megan. I did not receive any replies via email. It was sent via email and then also via regular mail. And I have not received comment back, either through email or through written mail. And I did ask Jill to check that the other day when she was in the office, and we still hadn't received anything back from them.
Okay, thanks. The only other thing is, I would really like someone to help me with my microphone to my Zoom meetings. I had no trouble in the past, but this, today, maybe I should just take my computer to Best Buy and say, "Help here." Because it's just not working. The mic is not working.
Oh, my.
Well, we can definitely try afterwards and see if I can help you with it. I'm sorry I had to put your computer in the waiting room. Otherwise, you reverb really badly for some reason.
Oh, well, okay. Well, we'll work on it, and it'll be okay. We'll get it done. Great, okay.
And I did have, I did have a few staff updates, if you want me to go to those. If you guys are finished discussing this, you just let me know when you're ready.
Well, Megan, I have, this is Ann. I had an individual contact me about a property that's listed on the inventory on Dam 4 Road that apparently is being rehabilitated. You know, I gave her the link to the permit pages, and apparently it was permitted in October. And you, I think, answered her as well, Megan, and thank you so much for that. But I was hoping maybe you and Jill could provide a better understanding of when somebody is getting a building permit for an historic building. What's the Historic District Commission's role? I know that we've reviewed design criteria for like the Sharpsburg School, for the house up in Penmar. So I'm just curious if you can paint that picture for me, so I'm a little better knowing what our responsibilities are.
Absolutely. So using that particular one as an example, that is outside of Downsville. It's not really in an area that you guys would review, would be the Historic Rural Villages that have had completed surveys and hearings completed for. Your town permitting, where we have National Registered Districts, and also where we have the antietam overlays. And of course, if someone has submitted for a historic tax credit and it's been granted, we would have the ability to review those. And you guys would have the ability to comment on any plans on those, because that permit guys would have the ability to comment on any plans on those. Because that permit isn't a demolition permit per se, even though they are doing partial, it wasn't under the purview of the HDC. So that particular permit, when it came in, the way that that one was handled was that we did reach out to them and provided them a letter telling them, you know, at this particular time, the HDC wouldn't be commenting on this. However, you do have historic structures, and here is our website with all of the information, also including tax credit information. If you decide to do something in the future, please feel free to reach out to either the HDC or our office with contact information. So that's how we handled that particular situation in areas that we would review. If it's a contributing structure, then of course it would come before you guys. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that clarifies that it's not, you know, for the demolition permit, it's anything on the register for building permits. It's if there's another overlay or district.
Correct.
And it falls within, we would see it. That's just very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and that particular one, I was, when we reviewed it, the stone portion of the structure is being retained and updated. So the exterior will be the same, and then they are doing an addition of the same size. It's a little bit smaller, actually, but it's in the same location, similar size. So the actual view from the road, once it's completed, shouldn't be too terribly different than what it is now. But they are restoring the stone portion and updating the interior.
Yeah, and I understand they were taking the windows out, which I think we need to have a discussion.
Well, when I, I did look at that, because I remembered you mentioning that, but the windows, I'm not sure, except for maybe the wood portion, the frame portion, those might have been original, but the ones in the stone portion did not look original when I looked at the photos of that structure. So I did think about that, but it did not, it didn't, of course, fall under review. But I did try to reach out to them with that letter, so they did get a letter from us for that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for that explanation. You know, when I got contacted, it's like, "Well, I don't know the answers, but I know who does." You know, the work you've done on the website is just tremendous. I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a good place for us to send people when they have some quick questions, and I took some notes tonight of things to add.
Yep. Well, thank you, Megan. Yeah, I appreciate you sending that letter. Anything else?
Did you want me to go ahead and do these couple of quick little staff updates?
Yes, please.
So I just wanted to actually start letting you guys know when that exact situation that we just discussed happened, where staff has actually reviewed something. So for the month of October, we did look at two different ag certificates, a non-residential sign permit, which is actually going to be at the New Public Safety Training Center. I think Jill had noted that Steve already looked at that one before he had left. We had two addition alteration permits, one of which was the one we just talked about. And then we did see a site plan, but that site plan wasn't actually, didn't involve any historic structures. So we did do six total staff reviews. I did also want to briefly touch on the fact that, I'm not sure if anyone listened in, but the planning commission did discuss Miller Sawmill at their meeting on Monday night, and they did recommend approval of the demolition permit. There was a very healthy discussion that was kind of led by Jill and a few of the members chimed in. So I can send the link to the YouTube video for that meeting, if any of the members would like that, to kind of listen to their discussion. It feeds into the demolition discussion that we've been having, and it was actually quite positive. So I encourage you to listen to it if you'd like me to send the link out.
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna send it to the whole committee, if you don't mind, Megan.
Sure. And then the permit will actually be moving forward from this point, since the, that technically ends the HDC's review. So we'll be reaching out with a letter to Mr. Stivers to close that out. I don't know if Jill had anything she wanted to add to that summary, since she started the process on that one.
Yeah, thanks, Megan. This is Jill again. Just to briefly update you, questions came up at the last meeting regarding the salvage of some of those materials. Mr. Stivers had, had talked to the members who had visited out there and commented that he was going to salvage as much as he possibly could. I did, I did give him a call and talk to him a little bit about, you know, I, I did mention how we were disappointed about the, the structure coming down before the permit, but he did let me know that all of the doors and any windows that were salvageable, he did salvage. They are being stored at the moment until he can find somebody who's willing to use them for something else. The shutter guards have been salvaged. He wants to use those in the new construction of the home that he's going to replace there. And the porch, we had talked about the porch. He said that did actually come off in one piece. He is storing that. He had mentioned that he had a friend who might be interested in taking that and putting it on their home, I believe in the town of Sharpsburg, but nothing's been definitively determined yet, but it is being salvaged. It's not just sitting in the landfill right now. And some of the logs, he was able to salvage out of the old log structure. He informed me that it was interesting, because he said it was actually built into three different, three different sections. So there were three different time periods that he was able to uncover. Obviously, the original log home, then there was the, there was an addition to that, and then a second addition, more modern addition that was added on. So there is a little bit of consolation in the whole process, that there were many things that were salvaged, and while they are in storage, he is looking to reuse them as part of the new construction for his new home and to, because I believe he's a contractor by trade, to use in other structures or to sell to people that he knows in the construction business.
Do you know if he saved any of the bricks?
I don't think he was able to save any of the bricks. Or the stone, actually.
This is a question, this is Burnell. Has he documented any of what you've just reported, which is, is good news?
No, I mean, he hasn't submitted any formal documentation. We didn't ask him to, because we had gone out ourselves to document. We are, we technically, I guess, are documenting as part of our records what we've noted and what we've taken pictures of, but he has not submitted anything new in terms of documentation.
I, I was just wondering if there would be a record of where, for example, the porch ended up, or where the doors or windows might have gone, when they go. It would, it would be of interest to have a, a tracing of those things. And I don't know if that would be something he would, he sounded very amenable to being cooperative with, with salvage. And I don't know if he's sorry about the house going down. I haven't heard any of that. But a record of where the salvage materials go would be of, of some interest.
This is Megan. I know you had mentioned that similar idea at the last meeting, and staff really did discuss that and look at all of the different databases and things that we have access to at this time with the staff that we have and the databases that we have access to. It's just not feasible for us to keep track of that. We're more or less trying to document, as Jill said, through the meetings and through site visits, what we can. We also checked with MHT to see what they had and what they have other jurisdictions submit, if there's any updates, like a demolition occurs. And basically, you would need to submit an entire inventory update form with the correct documentation as far as the type of digital photography and labeling and all of that stuff. And since we do get, we have been getting several of these lately, it wasn't deemed feasible at this time, but we do have that on our long-term goals, and I don't think it would be something that we, we could potentially put it in like a comprehensive plan as an idea for, for future exploration, but right now, it's just not feasible.
No, or as an addition to an application for demolition, you know, if we ask for documentation, previous status and then post-status, I mean, it might be part of, not for the staff to do, but for the applicant to provide. That's what I was thinking.
Oh, okay, sure. I mean, I can, we can definitely talk about that when we get to that point. Hopefully, the commissioners will be favorable when they, when they do review this stuff, and we can definitely talk about that, because expanded documentation is, of course, one of the goals from that commissioner meeting. So I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Megan.
Was there any other discussion for Miller Sawmill?
Megan, this is Edie. Do you all contact MHT to let them know when an inventory property has been demolished?
So at this time, no. It doesn't appear that that's been done in the past, but I do have that on my list of things to do. I did check with them, and they will accept that, you know, the structure is no longer there if we send them the information, so that they can do an update. So I will be forwarding the letters to them at the end of the process from now on.
Good.
Good, good. For what it's worth, I rode by the Review and Herald property the other day, and the house and barn are still up, but show no sign of any sort of upkeep.
Big sigh.
Question, question for Megan.
Yes.
Is there an update for the training sessions we were talking about?
Yes, that is the last thing on the list. Here it is to talk about real quick. Let me just touch on one thing briefly. We do have the Maryland Association of Historic District Commissions' annual meeting coming up November 12. And I didn't know if anyone had an interest in attending that. I would love for us to have representation there. If a member can't go, then I will be attending on your all's behalf, if that's okay. It does fall on the same date and time as the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. I believe it's their, it might be their annual meeting as well.
It is the annual meeting.
Yeah. So I know that Greg has expressed interest in going to the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area meeting, and so has Jill. She's also signed up for that. So we do have two people that will be attending at least for that one. So just to open that up for discussion, if anybody wanted to attend either of those meetings, that's the date and time, November 12 at 7:00 PM. The Maryland Association of Historic District Commissions will be sending out the meeting invitation. It's going to be a link, because it's going to be virtual any day now. She said she was getting ready to send it out today, but I didn't see it yet. So for what that's worth.
Megan, Greg here.
Yes.
We have the register for the Heart of the Civil War meeting, is that correct?
Yes, there was a link in one of the emails that I forwarded. If you haven't gotten the link, I can send that to you again.
I'm sure I've got the link. I'll go back and find it and execute.
Yes.
Is that a virtual meeting or an actual?
Yes. That one is, they were trying to do physical, but it will be virtual. That one will be virtual.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions about those two meetings?
It's possible I could do the MAHDC. I'll see.
Okay.
I know I've got the link somewhere, but, you know, which, I mean, you know, if, if you want to be there too, I think that would be great, but it would be nice for us to have a presence there.
Yeah, I don't mind. I had already blocked off that time for the, the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, because their invite came out earlier. So I don't mind switching, as long as we have somebody, we actually have two people going to the other one, so that's fine.
Yeah. I mean, I probably have more connection with the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, but we don't have a grant in with them right now. So, okay, I'll let you know.
Sure. And, and remember that Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area one, for those of you that have interest, is the one where they may be discussing the financial or fiscal impact of the, the heritage area, which was interesting for a few of the different entities that I know you guys are also involved with. So if that sways you toward that meeting, don't feel bad. I don't mind going to the other one.
Okay.
And then last but not least is that training that we mentioned. I never heard anything back from Mr. Rohr about his preferences. So let me switch my screen here real quick. I did contact them again today, just to make sure that these dates were still open, but it, it looks like the 13th had the most interest, November 13th, but I was a little bit leery of, of scheduling that date, since it's getting pretty close. And then the next best dates were November 17th, 18th, and 20th, as far as having, we had three members for each of those dates. So does anybody have anything to add to picking one of those dates? Again, it's November 13th, which should be a Friday, I think. Yes, Friday, November 13th, and then Tuesday, November 17th, Wednesday, November 18th, and Friday, November 20th.
Yeah.
So I actually have a problem with work.
Okay.
Because these are fairly long sessions, correct?
Yeah, I believe he said that they're at minimum, I think it's an hour and 45 minutes. Can double check that while we're here.
I have a problem with data.
No, and, and I will try to see if we can record it.
Yeah.
Let me see here. I think that since we are actually purchasing it, I'm hoping that they will let us either record it or at least share with the rest of the members, the documents that are involved with the training. And I usually would put a report based on the, what we learned at the training as part of the, it's two and a half hours, excuse me, two and a half hours for that, for the 100 level course.
That, that's right, Jill. The one that was agreed upon was the longest one.
Yeah, the 100 level course.
You know, I'm just wondering if it's too late to reconsider that and have one that is not as long. But if not, 17, 18, 20 are recorded for me.
Okay.
They're good for me too, Megan. This is Ann.
Okay.
And I'm good those days.
Greg here. The 17th and 20th are good for me. The 18th, I'm scheduled to work, but with, I probably have enough time to switch if I have to.
This is Michael. Any day is fine.
I like that. That's easy.
17, 20 is looking good.
Yeah, I think the, I will propose the 17th and 20th, because that seems to be the two best dates. And I will let you guys know if the instructor is still available for those dates. And if so, we'll go ahead and get that scheduled, and I will send out the meeting information once I have that. And I will make sure that we can at least get the materials to share for those that can attend. And then I see that most people did not have a preference for morning or afternoon, except Ann, you did mention that you prefer morning. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
But I can do either.
Okay.
I can be flexible.
All right. I like it. All right, and I have all of that noted, so I will get with them to get that scheduled. That's all I have.
Can I make a brief announcement? This is Edie.
Sure.
Tomorrow morning, Tolson's Chapel is being considered by the National Historic Landmarks Committee for designation.
Oh, terrific.
Excellent.
That's terrific.
I'm very excited. I think it's great for Washington County.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a good thing.
Yeah, if you won't, if you wouldn't mind keeping me updated about that, I'd love to share any information that you feel comfortable sharing, once you're, once you're completed with the process. We can post it to social media.
Relations blast.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I, I have an update about-
Uh, I, I have an update about a property in Sharpsburg. The, uh, building that has been the home of the Lutheran Church since 1943 has been sold. I do not know, I do not know who bought it at this point. All of my information is that it has been sold. It went on the market, uh, I think maybe last Sunday or Monday. The Lutheran Congress, the Lutheran Congress. Oh, Tom, you know about this?
I know it went on the market Monday and I've been contacted by a number of people who are pitching a number of different scenarios.
Right, right. Well, apparently one of those scenarios has come through at, at least to a certain point. Um, but that, that is a very important building to Sharpsburg. Uh, we have no, I, I have no idea who the purchaser is or what proposed uses might be. But that was in the town limits, so HDC has nothing to do with that. Am I correct in that?
I, well, I thought that Sharpsburg had a historic district survey or historic district area. Maybe I'm wrong. But I don't, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sharps, Sharpsburg was made a historic district in 2008. So that is a contributing, that is a contributing, uh, property. Uh, but I, I don't know about any kind, and it is in a residential zoning. It is not in a commercial zoning. Uh, the church has special exceptions for the religious, uh, aspect of that. But so it, it just all, it happened very, very fast. When the property went on the market, uh, the word I got was that almost immediately there were two offers. And apparently there has been an offer accepted. But that, that's all I know. But that's, that's, you know, one of the changing things that happens in this county. Uh, can happen very fast and a very important building to the history of the town and the architecture of the town. But anyway, now you don't.
Yeah, uh, I didn't know it had been sold, but, uh, thank you for telling us.
Yeah, that, that was the word I got this afternoon. Uh, I think it's reliable. I, I think it's reliable. Uh, but you know, until the, the papers all sign, the sale's not over. But, uh, there apparently is a lot of interest when, when that did happen, when it was announced.
Yeah.
The question, one of the important questions with that, and this is a little maybe off the topic, is that the, uh, oldest cemetery in town, uh, was thought to belong to the Lutheran Church. But as we were discussing it and checking Estat, the, uh, documentation said that the cemetery belongs to the town of Sharpsburg. So that might be a whole new can of worms.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. Can you believe it?
Lutheran cemetery is actually owned by the town?
That is what Estat says when it has the owner. Yeah, now, what, what that means and when that happened, you know, uh, it was a, a shock. Um, but it'll get straightened out, I guess. But anyway, there, there is that activity, important activity for the county.
Okay. Well, I guess if they try to do anything drastic with the church, it'll come before us. So we'll, uh.
Well, that, that was my question, if it is because it's, uh, you know, in the town, in the town limits. And what HDC, Washington County has to say about town activities.
Yeah, that town, they have their own historic district committee to deal with that. You're right.
No, they don't. They don't.
The county, the county will not review that. We have no authority in town limits, any of the town.
Okay.
And that's, that's what I, that's what I was thinking.
Keep our fingers crossed then. Thank you, Burnell. I appreciate that.
You, you're welcome. Keep your ears and eyes open and, um, we'll see where that goes. But it is certainly of interest.
It is indeed. It is indeed. Anybody else have anything to share before we wrap up here? Hearing nothing, I will, uh, call for a motion to adjourn.
Move that.
And that was Edie, uh, in a second.
I'll second it. That's Ann.
That's Ann. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, we are wrapped up. Thank you all for your time. It was nice to, uh, hear you.
Likewise.